Okay, I am going to go ahead and call the Tuesday, July 17th, 2018 City Council Meeting to Order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran. Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Present.
Councilmember Ramire Valderrama.
Here.
Councilmember Valderrama, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pleasure. Please rise and join me in saying our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Needs a second.
Well, a short day.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
One change. I'd like to pull item number seven from consent.
Okay, we will pull item from consent.
Interim City Manager Services Proffman.
Okay, and we will likely park that at the conclusion of executive session unless our city attorney advises us otherwise. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of six-zero, it passes. Our next order of business is an executive session. Executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment and to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1G, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1I, and potential land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1B. We do anticipate action, and it should be approximately one hour.
Sidebar. Let's go.
Kim, Jason, sorry.
Okay, I move to make a motion, or I move to approve the separation agreement between the city and Lyman Howard, which includes a separation date of August 1st, and the terms as described in the separation agreement labeled Detachment A that was given for the council for consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes, I will not be approving this because regardless of leaving, not leaving, liked. Not liked. I believe he had a contract that is in place that settled terms, and I don't believe that it's fiduciarily responsible to exceed those terms, so I will be opposing it.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I absolutely oppose the process and the fact that Lyman Howard is leaving. I think he's done an outstanding job for the city. I regret that he will be leaving, but I will be supporting the agreement that allows him to leave on terms that he approves.
Councilmember Hornish?
I will be opposing, thinking it's richer than it needs to be.
Councilmember Stewart?
I'd just like to say that Lyman Howard has served this community for, I think it's 18 years. That he came to this city when it was less than a year old and created a set of rules and financing when there weren't any. He has done nothing but serve honorably. He has worked hard. He is honest. He, I, I don't know, I can't even think of the adjectives to say about all of the good work that he has done and the service that he has provided. And I can only second what Councilmember Ritchie has said in terms of the process that's happening here, and that it's been wholly unprofessional. And I've worked at Microsoft for 15 years. I was a consultant before that and went into some pretty screwed up clients, and this is the most unprofessional thing I've ever seen in my career. So it saddens me, what's happening today.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
I would like to abstain.
Aye.
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 I may need hands, please, just so it's clear. Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
And abstentions? Okay, by a vote of four to one, the motion passes.
Four to two.
Four.
Four to two with one abstention.
Wait a minute. You can't abstain per our rules unless you have a conflict. Is that right? Can you pull the rules out?
of the council states that he or she is abstaining for the above reason, his or her silence shall be recorded as an affirmative vote. So I guess Councilmember Stewart, do you, your abstention will count as a yes? Would you prefer to change your vote and have us vote again?
I would like to stay silent.
Okay.
Under the rules, it would be counted as a yes.
So I guess that would be...
Let's do it again, then.
Five to.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there another motion?
Given what has just happened, I would like to move that we appoint, sorry, what's Glenn's last name again?
Akramov.
Akramov. Glenn Akramov as the acting city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven-zero, Glenn Akramov will be our acting city manager. Is there another motion?
Yes, concerning the pulled item number seven to the consent, I'd like to move that we table that contract for future discussions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Jason, do you have a vote?
Sorry, I, type of glitch.
This was on the consent item, the Proffman contract.
I vote no.
We're tabling.
Oh, table, table, yes.
Okay. So by a vote of seven-zero, we will table that contract. Okay, next on our agenda, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or a PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM the end of business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. First up, I have Peyton Stever. Okay, next I have Deb Soggi.
Commerce 704, 228th Avenue, Northeast, Samamish. First of all, I just want to state that the Chamber of Commerce will be missing working with Lyman Howard. He had our residents in mind when he kept the finances like they were with no, he was award-winning when he came up with the budgets, and the financing for our city was in great shape. So not only that, but he was very pro-business, and he was very good to our business community. So we will, we will miss him. On a lighter note, I want to bring up Samamish Nights, which is happening here, right here, outside with Samamish Days. We'll first celebrate cultures and the kids outside with games and activities on August 18th, and then we will quickly shut it down at 2:00 and miraculously open it up again here in the Commons for Samamish Nights with elegant tables, white tablecloths, and we're having tasting going on with fine restaurants. We've got some new ones this year, wineries, beer tasting, and non-alcoholic beverages. But we also have more entertainment this year. We have a band full vinyl jacket, and we have a magician coming, and some games outdoors. So it's going to be for the adults. Come out and have fun. This is the one big event we do every summer, and this is our 10th year. So I invite you all to come, and invite your friends. We would really like to see you there. The other thing I want to bring up is we are very disappointed that you weren't able to lift the moratorium. We still think, hopefully, there's some chance you could lift the moratorium on the town center. And we've been getting notifications at the Chamber from people that want to move here, or that have family that they want to move here that are retired. And so within the last month, we received three different requests for retirement homes and independent living for seniors here in Samamish. And this is just one of the letters that I received recently, is to the Chamber of Commerce. Would you please send us names and addresses of retirement independent communities in Samamish for seniors? Thank you. That came from Arizona, and I know there's a lot of senior, there's a lot of families here that want to get their senior parents here to live near them. But also, the other two requests within a month came from inside the city. They're trying to downsize, and they want to have a retirement home, a beautiful place to go to next. So that goes in with what we're trying to develop here in Samamish in the town center. And so I'm hoping that you will take the senior communities in mind when you make your decisions. The more, the concurrency plan that you came up with may not be a lot different, very different from the original one, but I still believe that you can do a lot of changes and you can make a lot of difference with other things in this community if you just make progress happen and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Devishi Thakur and Nimisha Krishnan.
23809 Southeast 6th Street, Samamish, Washington.
Hi, my name is Ryan Krishnan, and I am at 23220 Northeast 14th Place.
Hi, my name is Nimisha, and I'm going to 7th grade at Englewood Middle School.
My name's Ryan, and I'm going to be a senior at Tesla STEM High School.
My name's Devishi, and I'll be a 10th grader at STEM this year.
And we are all Sustainability Ambassadors. Sustainability Ambassadors is a nonprofit organization with 43 middle school students and high school students representing nine school districts, plus the private school network throughout King County. Our mission is to empower youth to catalyze community sustainability. We do this by studying what we call the four Ps. These are policy analysis, performance assessment, project management, and public speaking. We're here to talk to you about the recent LWSD Community Sustainability Summit, which the Lake Washington School District Ambassador Team held in Lakeview. This year was our best summit yet. For the third consecutive year, our event took place at the Microsoft campus in Redmond. Microsoft has been a very intriguing and helpful partner with our summit in past years, and this year, they took a huge leap and covered the costs of the event, paying for catering and providing free space for the entirety of the summit. We deeply appreciate and recognize all the effort and support that they have provided us in making these events as successful as they can be.
Sorry, really quick, as a community member, could we get five minutes on the clock?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm just going to keep talking. So here are some quick data from the summit. So there were 84 people registered with 63 people in attendance. For our participating schools, there were three elementary schools, seven middle schools, and five high schools. In total, that's 16 schools, which make up 31% of the 51 schools in LWSD. Next year, we're aiming for 50 schools represented. In terms of city participation, there were city staff from Kirkland, Redmond, and Samamish, with David Goodman coming from Samamish. And there's also city council representation from Kirkland and Samamish with Councilwoman Stewart. Next year, hopefully, you can urge your Redmond counterparts to come as well. City Youth Council representation from Redmond, Kirkland, and Samamish were also there. The school district has taken an increasing notice in Sustainability Ambassador's events. This year, they sent the district administrator, Dan Veylen, who is the district's director of college and career readiness, as well as a few of his colleagues. We also had representation from the business and community sectors, most notably Microsoft, YMCA Earth Service Corps, and the People for Climate Action, who are actually running in March this Saturday. There are also many new collective impact projects that came out of the summit. All of these projects intend to span many jurisdictions throughout the community, and they were all created with the following criteria in mind. They're all created to be the easiest project to do in the next 12 months, to ingrate the greatest number of people and diversity of people, and also create the greatest measurable impact.
Based on this criteria, participants at the summit decided that the following projects were the most important actions to take in the next 12 months. At the school and school district level, we'd like to, one, advocate for a district-level green team; two, engage ASB and PTSA in implementing sustainability policies and programs; and, three, implement a district-wide food, rescue, and share program. At the city and community level, we want to, one, advocate for the adoption of star community rating system in every city; two, implement strategies to make K-4C commitments on schedule; and, three, facilitate a Samamish Community Sustainability Summit. These were the best ideas that came out of the summit, and we will be working diligently to meet our goals in the next 12 months. We will measure our progress throughout the next 12 months at our LWSD Sustainability Ambassador events, including our fall sustainability kickoff and our next community summit. We will also be reporting our successes to stakeholders in our community, like yourselves, that need to know. As an organization, we'd also like to invite you to attend our 2050 workout. We will be making more information available in the near future for those of you that are interested in participating in an exciting thought experiment that explores our future in sustainability.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys before you go. I attended that summit, and it was an impressive five-hour-long summit. All of the kids were engaged. As a matter of fact, we as a council could probably take note on how to conduct a productive five-hour meeting. So I'll just throw that out there. But thank you, guys, for all your work. You were amazing. You came up with great ideas. You stayed engaged, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Natalie Price.
Good evening, council members. My name is Natalie Price. I live at 14510 Southeast 60th Street, and I'm here tonight on behalf of STCA LLC. We continue to have a lot of positive feedback from the folks we've been talking to at the farmer's market, where we are having a booth every Wednesday. And I just want to, I won't take up too much time tonight, but I just want to remind us all of the number of successful initiatives that STCA and the city have worked on together to improve the city, including STCA allowed the city to take additional land it needed to provide another turn lane from Fourth Street to 228th. We are in discussions with the Fourth Street contractor to permit the contractor to utilize STCA property to shorten the timeframe of the project and lower the cost of the project overall. We've also agreed to cover the costs of a sewer segment that the district was otherwise prepared to remove from the current project list due to higher-than-expected costs in an effort to keep Fourth Street from being shut down more than once. STCA has also invested hundreds of thousands of dollars investigating low-impact development techniques for the town center stormwater system, and we're currently investigating the ability to provide an urban tree canopy plan, self-sustaining solar power, a tree bank to be used for generations by the city, and transportation options to connect all of the town center zones. In addition, we'd like to say that STCA is fully committed to start working jointly with the city to investigate all applicable parties and agencies locating a multimodal hub in the town center area. Tonight, we would like to ask you to consider lifting the moratorium so that we can continue working with the city and the residents of Samamish to bring the best possible town center to Samamish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Don Jaren. Don, you scribbled five minutes on your sheet. I'm assuming you're representing the official position.
Of the Citizens for Samamish.
Is it their official position?
Well, the head of it, but if you want to cut me down to three minutes, that's okay.
I'm just asking if it's, it says official position of a recognized community organization. I'm just clarifying that it's the official position of Citizens for Samamish.
Well, it's approval of Harry Shedd.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure Lita had the right time on there.
Okay. Don Jaren, 22730 Southeast 23rd Place. And first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Lyman Howard for his awesome service over the 17 years, or whatever it was. It was a real pleasure working with him. Now, it is July, in the month during which the council indicated that the moratorium would be removed. This understanding was that the traffic concurrency program would be looked at in depth, and an interim revised concurrency ordinance based on intersection LOS would be adopted. At least, that's what the citizens understood was happening. So by digging down into the weeds of the concurrency methodology, which is primarily used to determine which transportation projects need to be worked on, the council has spent much money, much time, and hugely diverted city staff from the tasks of running the city. It is time to move forward and release the city from this arrested state of functionality. Outside observers see a dysfunctional city with wild accusations about past methodology used in concurrency determinations. In reality, the existing concurrency ordinance worked well in determining which projects should be in the tip. Many years ago, the council decided that money required to bring Eastlake-Samamish Parkway up to level of service standards would be prohibitive, and not accomplish a significant reduction in congestion since the choke points were primarily in Redmond. Thus, with the concept of complete streets to be encouraged, and with the belief that transportation dollars could be better spent on other much-needed projects, the concept of giving credit for wider shoulders, center media, and complete street parameters was embraced and integrated into the concurrency program. This was a council policy decision, as was the decision to focus on PM peak hour measurements, even if the comp plan stated AM or PM, whichever is greater. Segment averaging was a way around having a corridor failure because of particularly localized failure while still bringing attention to those failures which need to be corrected. The choice is to either segment average or accept level of service F or lower for intersections or segments that don't reach the level of justification based on cost-benefit ratio. ISACWA accepts failed intersections, while Bellevue does intersection averaging to avoid requiring fixing of failures that can't be justified as sensible expenditure of funds. The existing concurrency program has worked well, resulting in the collection of the highest transportation impact fees of any city in the state by far. I believe that Vancouver's fees come in at around $1,500 to $1,700 per new home, around one-tenth of ours. Meanwhile, the town center plan, which has a programmatic EIS that considers traffic impacts in a very conservative manner, has been placed on hold during this digression into the details of how concurrency is determined and what it should be used for. Please stay the course and at least release the town center from the moratorium, so this wonderful plan to provide a heart and soul to Samamish can move forward in a holistic manner. Many retailers have already opened for business in the town center and have based their revenue projections, and frankly, long-term viability on the continued development of the town center. There are people referring to the Highway Capacity Manual as the ultimate reference source for setting LOS standards and determining concurrency test pass or fail thresholds. This is a mistake. The word highway should raise concern since we have no highways in Samamish. Also, the fact that capacity and throughput are revered, whereas in our city, we should be considering safety first and saving a few minutes of peak commute time lower down on the list. Yes, past TIPs included projects that weren't moved forward during a six-year program, but being on a TIP is a requisite for state or federal funding eligibility. We should be supporting Samamish as a wonderful community to age in place. Case in point. Indeed, we have great schools, a safe environment with beautiful outdoor and indoor spaces, making Samamish attractive to what I consider the one-and-done category of households. Buy one house, raise your kids, and then be done with Samamish. Do we really want a transient community, or do you want to encourage aging in place with seniors contributing to enrichment of the community? As the demographics evolve, by encouraging aging in place and building out the town center, Samamish becomes a more stable community with a lower percentage of residents under the age 18 and a decreasing school population, which would certainly help decrease internal congestion as well as commute congestion. So make your choices considering all the above. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Dave Levin. We just need your address.
Oh, 2322, 216th Avenue, Southeast. So I'm here today to talk about a permanent approval process that has been a problem for me, and it involves Chapter 1320 SMC, which is surface water requirements. Turns out that I'm trying to remove the existing deck and replace it with something a little smaller. I wanted it to be the same size, but I wasn't able to get the span that I wanted without putting a post in the middle of a walkway. So I've worked with the builder and said, okay, I'm going to make it shorter so I don't have too many posts in the middle of it. But the issue that I'm coming up with is I happen to be on the edge of Pine Lake's critical drainage area. It's listed on the map as Zone Class III, and so my permit was rejected. Basically, I've got a patio under the deck. The house is over 30 years old, so nothing has changed. I just want to take the deck, which is like 10 feet off the ground, remove it, put a new deck on it, because it's starting to, you know, rot out. And today, I found out that, oh, I'm in this critical drainage area, and now it's causing a problem. And so what does that mean? I have no clue. So the issue is, I've already put a down payment down. I can't use the money for anything else. The builder has it. The builder can't get any work done because the permits held up. I got an email that said, your group is, I guess, in the middle of making a decision. It won't go through until next year. And in the meantime, I have to hire a civil engineer that may require some drainage, manipulation of the yard. I don't know. Basically, again, nothing's happened. If I'd have done this three years ago, probably would have been fine. The, I did get some information about surface water requirements. There are eight points. The only one that's really relevant is that I'm in the critical drainage area, the Zone 3. The others talk about impervious surfaces, landslide hazard drainage area, size of the impervious surface added, drainage pipe or ditch being near flood area, a redevelopment project. So none of those really relate to me. I'm not going to increase any impervious surfaces. Basically, the deck's off the ground. The water goes right through it. And so I'm asking if there's anything that you can do to allow me to continue... And so I'm asking if there's anything that you can do to allow me to continue in the process and get the permit approved.
So I would suggest maybe having -- there's a few people from community development in the room. I don't know that we have all the nuanced details to provide you with information up here this evening. And I don't know that they do either off the top of their head, but...
So I have talked to some of your staff. I've been to the permit center, and I just met Andrew just at the beginning of the meeting. Staff's been very helpful and supportive, but they say that their hands are tied. I will work with them, see if we can make something go. But right now, they say there's no exemptions, and that's kind of why I'm up here. So I mean, I'm not really impacting the stormwater at all, yet I can't maintain my property. Basically, that's the issue.
So the council is a policy-setting body. We put the policy in place, and it is up to the city staff to execute the policy that we put into place. So council at this place doesn't really have -- we can't put our fingers in it. I mean, I think we can try and facilitate a conversation, but I don't think we're going to be able to, unfortunately, this evening, answer your question. I might suggest sending an email to the council, and then maybe we can help start a dialogue. But aside from that, I'm not sure we can answer the questions up here this evening.
Okay. Sounds great. I mean, I just -- I guess the reason to talk is to bring up the issue of why the storm -- the surface water requirements, right now, there's no exemptions being allowed. So you've kind of bind -- you've held up the process. If you can allow in your policymaking, allowing exemptions to occur, that would allow me to work with the staff and move forward. What I'm hearing from the staff is their hands are bound up.
Councilmember Hornish.
I would suggest that we have staff give us a brief on this, and maybe we can talk. Because I think, if I remember my recollection, was we kind of gave staff some leeway to implement what they thought we wanted to do.
There were a certain number of applications that were held up at that time.
Is that what it was?
If this is a newer application, it would be held to the code that we...
The current code that we adopted, okay. Those are the specifics we don't have, so if we want to do anything, we can get a briefing from the staff, I would guess.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful. Councilmember Stewart.
It would be interesting to know, too. You mentioned that you wanted to replace the deck because it was rotting out, so I guess one question is, are there safety issues concerned?
I'd like to get it done as soon as possible. So I mean, I don't know if that plays into anything, but yeah, I'm nervous about it.
Yeah, if you'll send us an email, I think we can help facilitate that conversation with staff. Councilmember Ritchie?
That's what I was going to ask. We need more details from you. I think that this is the kind of thing we need to figure out whether or not our policy is overarching, or is it reaching too far? I mean, you've presented a case that frankly brings up a lot of questions for me, so I want to make sure that I get more information from you, then we can talk to staff, and to make sure our policy is doing the right thing. So I appreciate the input and the specific nature of your case. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Come on in.
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd Way. I know you had a rough day today, and I'm sorry you had to do that. I'm sad. Oh, he's him, so get over it. I'm here because, first of all, I'd like for Pam Stewart, if you can connect with me for the group that spoke earlier, the kids, I really want to get involved in that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so one of the agenda items got knocked off. It's the introduction to the city's draft water quality and riparian habitat monitoring plan. That thing is excellent, and kudos to the stormwater staff and your public works. They did a good job here. You need those rain gauges, get them first and now. The other thing I wanted to say is, community safety needs to be checked first on every single piece of paper like this that comes into my home, and that I come to talk with you about every single one, please, and thank you. Y'all take care, please.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi, my name's Mary Victor. I am a member of the Pacific Science Center. I believe in science. As you know, from the times I speak, I also live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. So tonight, I have t-shirts for you instead of PowerPoints to give Lea a break. First of all, I do need to stop and thank Lyman Howard for all the time and effort he's put into the city. He's a very kind person, a very intelligent person, extremely strong finance. I believe he did his job as hard and as good as he could. I know he would personally ask to see people or to follow up on things. I met with him at office hours. He called me into his office sometimes when things needed to happen, and I think he was trying to do what he could. So I honor that he worked here, and just to let you know where I grew up in Montana, I don't have a river that runs through it, but there are creeks that run through it next to it, and one of them is called Lyman Creek. And on behalf of Stormwater, I wanted to say a few things. You have a number of consent agenda items. I don't have a problem with any of them, but I would like to ask you to think outside the box. The city spends way too much time looking at this, and then this, and then this, and then this, and never tying them together. And when you do that, you're really hurting yourself, because if you're not making action and taking action and connecting the things, you're going to have way too many things to do. And if we don't have time to do it once and do it right, we're not going to get done at all, and then you're going to have problems. So you need to start connecting. So I'm just going to offer something that I think Lyman would like me to say, is you have Zaccoose Creek and you have George Davis Creek. And I know as a city, you have to put things out to bid. You have to take the lowest responsible bidder, and you don't have any choice about that. But originally, when the Zaccoose Basin Plan started, I can't remember the gentleman's name from OTAC, he knew nothing of George Davis Creek's history, none of it. Never worked on it, never did anything. King County knows a lot about it because they did. So now you've got George Davis Creek going to yet another new consultant. And I guess my request would be that it just seems like you're missing the share, the mind share that could happen. If you were there, you guys have four salmon creeks in a mile and a half. You've got Pine Lake Creek. Canham Creek runs into it. You've got Ebright Creek. You've got Zaccoose Creek, and you've got George Davis, and it's in a mile and a half of quarter. You're the only city like that, and they're important salmon streams, and hopefully that'll work. So I wore my salmon shirt for that, and I wore my antler earrings. But I think you need to look at -- I go to a lot of Water District meetings, too, and I had a really awesome consultant one day, and he said, "You need to address things that you need to address. In order to do them, you have to spend money." And when you spend money, if you spend money smarter, you end up with better outcomes. And there were many years here where there were a lot of things that there were unintended consequences or things not getting done, and we're kind of hopefully leaving that chapter behind, and I think we need to do smarter spending, better outcomes. And to chime in with what Karen Herring said, I got three rain gauges budgeted in 2015. One of them needs to get installed probably at Zaccoose or Ebright. And the reason that you need to do that, you can't even do water quality unless you know how much it's rained, when it's raining, and you need a year of baseline data. Otherwise, you collect water, and you can't even figure out what you need to test. You can't know if you did it. I've also gone to the Water District, and I've gotten their data back to 1984 because Scott Jonas retired, and it's put online by David Funk at King County. David Funk is also retiring. You guys are going to lose this institutional mileage if you don't get moving on it, so at least try to do the rain gauges. You just need at least one. King County has two of them, and I've gone over my...
Thank you.
Darn it.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening?
I wanted a picture of that t-shirt.
Nope.
Where do they sell them?
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Still moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? He's seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. By a vote of 7-0, the consent calendar passes. Our next item is unfinished business, is the draft transportation concurrency and level of service policy.
Good evening, council. And our legal counsel, I almost said Mr. City Manager, but he's not here right now, so in absentia. Anyways, again, my name is Cheryl Paston. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director. To my right, as you know, is Kendra Breland with Farron Peers. And so we are back again to talk about adding intersection -- I'm sorry, adding segments to the current proposed intersection-only concurrency policy. So what I handed out was a flow chart of decisions that we will need the council's input on. Not all tonight, certainly, unless you're ready to give us direction, but Kendra and I will be walking you through what the policy decisions are that we'll need in order to add segments back into the concurrency and LOS policy. So the main purpose of tonight's meeting, oops, is to inform the council of the potential effects of adding road capacities to the draft transportation concurrency and LOS policy. We'll highlight the policies again that will need certainly input and discussion by council. And then we'll have a really high-level schedule and level of effort, what it will take to modify the comprehensive plan, the codes. There's a few other tasks that we'll have to redo again if we do go ahead and add segments into the concurrency policy. So there's a lot of kind of questions and options that we'll walk through. Please interrupt, you know, if you have questions, and we'd be happy to answer those. So kind of the impetus for adding the roads, or potentially adding the roads back into the concurrency policy, really came to a head, I guess I would say, at last week's meeting, where the council directed us to go ahead and evaluate the potential and the impacts of adding road segments to the concurrency policy. And it was primarily because the council felt like the intersection-only measurements didn't measure congestions on some of the road segments that aren't bounded by concurrency intersections. So that -- I know you all know that. I just kind of wanted to highlight for the audience in case they haven't been tracking along all the discussions that we've been having with council. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kendra, and she will walk us through the flow chart that I just handed out. We also have some more slides to detail some of the policy questions.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. So as Cheryl mentioned, I'm here to kind of walk through the nuts and bolts of some of the key questions that we need you to answer such that we can get to work in potentially incorporating segments into the level of service concurrency policy. So the first thing we wanted to kind of put out there, we're going to be sharing a number of staff recommendations tonight, and certainly those were here to -- it's ultimately council's decision, but we thought that it would be helpful at least to kind of share kind of where we landed. But the overall policy is just, or philosophy is just, from the work, the journey that we've been on with council over the past year, we think that, you know, it's probably the approach here is not to repurpose Table T8. The previous council and this council shared a number of concerns about just kind of characteristics of T8, be it from some of the factors that are incorporated into T8, the non-motorized facilities, the trails, the sidewalks, and how they're giving vehicle capacity to the lack of documentation. And again, it's no real negative reflection on T8. The table was really put in place, it was ahead of its time when it was developed. It was very innovative at the time, but I'd say the practice has really caught up to T8, and there's a lot better documented methodologies out there. And that's what we're going to be sharing tonight, is a methodology that's grounded in the 2010 HCM. It actually is a methodology that's been spearheaded by the Florida Department of Transportation. And while you might say, "Well, why use a Florida table?", they are the agency that put in the time to think about how could the highway or the HCM 2010 methodologies, which are based on speed, be crosswalked over to volume data, which is something that's more commonly collected by most agencies. And so the Florida DOT methodologies that we'll be talking about tonight are things that have been applied for cities all over the country and many cities here in Washington State. So as Cheryl mentioned, we developed a flow chart, and there's a lot of boxes here, but I wanted to orient you to kind of what we're looking at. And this is really an orientation to the direction that we need from council. And you can see on the left-hand side, seven boxes, and these are essentially the areas that we need input on from the scope of, and I'm going to go through all of this in more detail, of whether we're looking at all principal and minor arterials throughout the city, or if we're just looking at some of those northern arterials that lack intersections, to whether we're going to look at segments and corridors or just segments, what those segment or corridor boundaries need to be, the time period of our analysis, of whether we're going to go back to daily, average weekday, daily traffic volumes, or whether we're going to use peak hour traffic, whether we're going to look at directional, one-way or two-way directional volumes, what capacity assumptions we're going to make, which actually we're recommending here, the Florida DOT methods, and then last but not least, how we're going to set our concurrency thresholds. So a lot of boxes here, but the presentation that we're giving tonight is really to kind of give you some orientation to what each of these boxes mean. And we've got some checkboxes. We'll be sharing the staff recommendations. And just to give you a little preview for tonight, these are kind of our recommendations throughout, and we'll hit on this over the course of the presentation. So again, this presentation is laid out for all of these boxes, or all of them except for one. We do provide two options and then a staff recommendation. So I'm going to dive into the first box, which is physical scope. So we've got two options here. One, and what was brought up in the motion last week, was that we should be doing segment analysis for all minor, principal and minor arterials throughout the city. And if you look at this map here, I know it's a little hard to see on the screen, but the principal and minor arterials are the red and blue lines on this map, so those green lines were not included in the motion, and we're not proposing that we would be doing segment analysis on those collector arterial roadways. Option two, which was something that was brought up and has been fed into some of the council discussion, was maybe we're not bringing in segment analysis for all principal and minor arterials throughout the city, but we're really just looking at those principal and minor arterials where concurrency intersections don't exist. And the philosophy behind this recommendation is that congestion is really caused primarily by the intersections. So in areas of the city where we've got a fair number of concurrency intersections, we are able to measure concurrency adequately in those locations, but we did think there was a valid point that for a couple of locations, Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, north of Inglewood Hill Road, and 244th, north of 8th Street, that those locations don't have concurrency intersections. And so the current concurrency policy doesn't actually provide a mechanism to adequately measure congestion in those areas. The staff recommendation is option two. Again, it's primarily rooted in that we feel that the concurrency intersections provide an adequate mechanism for measuring concurrency in most locations throughout the city. However, in those two northern extensions of Eastlake-Samamish Parkway and 244th, we think there are some valid concerns there, and incorporating a segment-level methodology might make a lot of sense for measuring concurrency in those, or measuring congestion in those locations. locations.
Okay, maybe this might be a good time to pause, see if there are any reactions, questions, comments?
Councilmember Stewart.
I have one question, and this is really directed to my fellow Councilmembers, is why on earth would we include East Lake Samamish Parkway when it's been stated by several Councilmembers, past and present, that it can never be expanded, or widened, or fixed? And the GMA states that we cannot create a level of service that can never pass. So it seems to me that, should we be measuring it? Of course we should. Do we measure it? Yes, we do. Should it be part of concurrency? I don't see why, because we would only have to then set a level of service of F so that we were in compliance with the GMA. So it seems like a lot of work. Again, I'm all for making changes that add value to our citizens and to the community. I see no value in doing an effort to add something in, only to have to basically exclude it right back out. So can anyone help me understand why we would do that?
Councilmember Valderrama.
So quick? All right. I concur with what was said by Councilmember Stewart. We had even the comments of Councilmember Deputy Mayor Moran, who mentions that when she did the ribbon cutting, and 30 years ago on the Planning Advisory Board, King County told us it was failing at that point. 10 years ago, I was here when King County came in and said that they never intended to expand it because it was failing. They knew it before they gave it to us, and they were going to go off Sahale. So time after time, and by the way, Wazdott and Redmond both supported that. Redmond, in fact, says that that's one of the reasons why their two lanes narrowed down to one lane well before Marymore, because you can't get any more cars out of there. And they've told their residents to go out 187, so they're not going to double up there. So that bottleneck continues to exist. So this has been since incorporation, something that all of our citizens know exists. And being that I live there, and I go on that road maybe six times back and forth a day, three in each directions on that, so I live it, I understand it. And to be fiscally responsible, there's no way we're going to fix it. I was driving, it's a mile in some way. Are we talking about doing an exercise that's going to tell us that what, is it going to be $200, $300, $500 to build another ramp? Of course, you have to secure right-of-way over Redmond to get a flyover. That's farcical. I mean, you would bankrupt the city. So you're either saying you're going to try to measure something to bankrupt the entire city, or you're going to try to do something that is directly in disagreement with the GMA that says you can't use concurrency to go and stop growth. I remind everybody that half the state, well, the average of the state is D for level of concurrency, so half the state is failing. Many of our neighboring cities accept the F. Vancouver, that was mentioned before by Don Jaren, with the impact fees of $1,500 to $1,700, exempts some of the worst traffic jams and congestions in the state that they have coming off that bridge and having developments to allow it to grow. We recognize that that's there. There are other things that we can do to either expand other roads or stuff, but East Lake Samamish Parkway has no amount of money that we can bear or afford to fix it, and to otherwise is basically saying another permanent de facto moratorium, because you would not be able to ever fix that road, and you knew it to begin with. And as was mentioned by Councilmember Jaren, that was a policy that was recognized well before this Council, and they acted in different ways, in different means, recognizing that they weren't going to be able to address it and put more lanes into it. Our citizens didn't even want to put the sidewalks in and the medians all the way up. That was deemed to be the most wasteful project in the city's history, when the Samamish review took that poll to go forward. So I think it's ludicrous and a wasteful exercise, or it's disingenuous and misleading at best. Thank you.
So I may be able to embrace a policy that exempts the East Lake Samamish Parkway, but I think it's technically, if we adopted level-of-service intersections, it's a de facto exemption anyway, because there are no intersections. But I think in order to be able to make an educated decision on this, I think it'd be more interesting to see what the capacity looks like, based on what you're going to present to us, so that we can understand what it looks like in practice. Is it possible we can get a look at that before?
Hasn't that already been done, in the previous times, they've looked at it?
They said they have a policy for segments from the Florida DOT. I want to see what that looks like. So when you lay that over top of the vehicle trips that we have, we have a better understanding of what it looks like in practice, because they said in here, it could be one-way or two-way. What if you exempt one direction going northbound, and you don't exempt the southbound? I'd like to see what they have before we say yea or nay on the Parkway specifically for an exemption.
Why would I ask? Has anybody exempted one direction of a road before in this state?
I don't know that it's been done in that level, but, so, no, I-
Thank you.
Councilmember-
Well, we want to be leading edge here.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, in two and a half years of sitting up here, I just find it amazing of comments that I hear that are superlatives to state, make a statement and make a point. I've already heard tonight, can't set a level that can never be met. That's not, the GMA doesn't say that. It says you can't raise a level to frustrate the GMA, but it doesn't say you can't set a level that can never be met. Another comment, can't use concurrency to stop growth. That's what concurrency from the state legislature says. And I'm going to paraphrase, my reading of the GMA is, and there was another comment earlier, that said concurrency equals a test for figuring out what road projects to do. That's not what the GMA says. It's a test to determine if our infrastructure is keeping up with our growth, and if it's not keeping up within the six years that it allot, then you stop the growth until you can catch up. That's per state legislature. And it says that if you can't catch up, then, well, the first thing is you try to catch up by doing the tip, and within the six years, and that's concurrency. The other option, you increase or lower, however you want to look at it, the level of standard that you want, the LOS, and then you're not raising it too high or unreasonable. I think that's the real test. And then the third option is to change the land use, which nobody ever talks about. But that's what the state legislature law is. It's not that we can't set a concurrency that we can never meet. It's not that we can't set a level that can never be met. It's to test whether or not we have the proper infrastructure to allow continued growth. And to say, we're just not even going to measure it? I think we're being, we're doing a disservice to our citizens to not even say, well, we're just going to ignore it. You know, the GMA, we don't care about. It says we've got to measure it, and we could stop growth if we're too much, but yeah, we're not going to worry about that. I'm not in that camp, but that's basically what everybody's saying when they say we can't set a level too high, and those kind of things. So to answer your question, the reason to test, to measure it, is to at least know if it's failing, and if it is failing, then we can exempt it. But just to say, ah, we don't even care to measure it, that's, I think, is disingenuous.
Sorry, I can go by first round first.
Oh, cool. So I have heard several members on the Council say that East Lake Samamish Parkway is this close to failing. Based on what?
T8, probably.
Based on T8 standards? Is that, I guess I'm asking the Cheryl and Kendra. Based on what knowledge, what measurement are we saying right now that East Lake Samamish Parkway is failing? Or close to failing?
Right now, the only guidance we have is Table T8.
Okay. So based on Table T8, we are saying it's failing?
Nope.
Nope, not failing.
That it's close to failing?
Nope. I've got the numbers right here. Average weekly daily traffic, 18,938. The capacity concurrency threshold, which would be the capacity of East Lake Samamish Parkway, 25,370. That is the maximum capacity we gave ourselves in Table T8.
With the trail?
If you took out, yes, the trail adds 6,950 vehicle trips on the Parkway. I assume that there was, and I asked staff the question, but I didn't hear back whether or not my assumptions were correct. I unpacked the math a million times over the weekend, trying to figure out what they did in order to gain that capacity of 25,370. What I was able to glean was a 12-foot travel lane, a four-foot shoulder, and then the full 12-foot maximum of the regional trail. The irony in that, however, is that the travel lanes aren't 12 feet down there, they're 10. So I measured all up and down the Parkway on Sunday.
So the question we're trying to answer by going down this policy tree exercise is to try to determine if East Lake Samamish Parkway is failing based upon essentially the volume? And we're not getting that information through the Table T8. Is that accurate?
The way that T8 works right now is, as the mayor described, essentially, it provides capacity based on what's on the ground. And then the way that you assess whether or not it's failing today is actually with, either with existing volumes, which is 2016, the volumes that are there, the all, the weekday average traffic volumes, that's two-way all day. We tend to look at pipeline for concurrency, so that's looking six years out. So it adds the growth that's already been approved within the city. And so it's a comparison of those forecast all-day traffic volumes, two-way, against the assumed capacity based on what's on the ground. And concurrency, of course, if you had something planned, you know, more infrastructure there, and it was funded within a six-year timeframe, then you could also take credit for that capacity.
Okay. So just to clarify now, by moving forward with your, the staff recommendation to include this in the segment, this segment, or this non-intersection segment of road, what is that, what obligations is that putting us under? I mean, there's talk up here, I want to hear from your perspective, as far as what does that cause us to have to do, and what options do we have to deal with it once we know what's there? Once we know what more is there?
That's a good question. And I think East Lake Samamish Parkway is a pretty tricky one. In the other kind of boxes that we'll work through tonight, there's lots of decisions here. So all we've talked about thus far is, well, scope, which is an important one, and we talked a little bit about not repurposing T8. So if we used these F dot tables, essentially, it would be guidance that would be much more rooted in vehicular capacity that's on the road today. That's what would be used as our capacities. We wouldn't be taking into account the trail. But that's, those are all decisions for Council. We still haven't gone through, are you going to look at daily volumes versus peak hour volumes? Are you going to look at one-way volumes versus two? And then the really critical question at the very end is, what do you make your standard? And I think a few of the Councilmembers have mentioned here, you know, we could set it as level of service F. That's probably the only thing that's reasonable, particularly if we're looking at a peak direction. There's concerns about it being disingenuous. At the same time, in hearing other Councilmembers talk, what we're trying to be responsive to is, some Councilmembers seem to think that transparency in terms of the data, and really depicting those conditions, is an appropriate thing for us to do as part of our concurrency policy. To the extent that we set, you know, we recognize that there are some during peak times in peak direction, it's going to be very, very congested, and we set our standard to allow for that, it might not require the city to do anything beyond report on it. To the extent that you set your level of service standard higher, and you say, you know what, we're not going to allow for congestion during these times of day, then you're going to need to figure out a capital solution, which could be very expensive. That is something, of course, as staff, we haven't gone through and estimated, but that's the choices that are before you.
Okay, thank you.
Is setting the level of service no different than exempting it, level of service of F, for example?
Many communities that have set a level of service F. Many do it for downtown intersections. The city of Kent has it for their entire downtown. They also have it along SR 99. So you would not be unprecedented. I think it's just, it's transparency that, look, you know, yes, you know, we're watching traffic congestion, we're monitoring it, but at the same time, there are other considerations that override traffic operations, which, you know, those could be, that could be cost. It could be character. It could be crossing distances for pedestrians. There's a lot of different ways, reasons that communities set level of service F standards in certain constrained locations.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, just one. Kim, do you have the section of the GMA that talks about not setting or raising a level of service that can never pass? Do you happen to know what that is off the top of your head?
I'll find it specifically. It's in 3670A6, probably Section B, and I'll find you-
Great, that would be great if you could-
I think it's a footnote.
There is a section in 6A3D, and I would apologize for the sounding so convoluted, but it's not my fault. It's the legislature.
This is raising the level of service unreasonable?
Well, yeah, she's going to read us the section.
The 6-
What that says is-
I can't hear you, can't just speak.
Sorry, yes. What that says is, specific actions you must include in your plan, specific actions and requirements for bringing into compliance locally-owned or transportation facilities or services that are below an established level of service standard. So that's addressing, if that intersection is below the level of service you set, you have to include in your plan, specific actions and requirements to bring it into compliance.
But what if, what if there's nothing that could possibly be done, or at least nothing within the realm of reason, right? Short of building into the lake, or buying up, you know, 20 or 30 multimillion-dollar homes, something of that nature, then what does the GMA state on that? Do you know?
In 6B, it says, let's see, find the part. After adoption of the comprehensive plan by jurisdictions required to plan, local jurisdictions must adopt and enforce ordinance which prohibit development approval if the development causes the level of service on a locally-owned transportation facility to decline below the standards adopted in the transportation element. And that goes into unless you have the six-year strategies, or six-year TIP or strategies. It tells you what the strategies may include.
If you could keep looking for that, we'll-
I will. I think it's actually in a WAC.
So I just wanted to address Councilmember Hornish's statement, because if I can go back to my statement, I actually explicitly said that we should measure it, but that doesn't mean that we have to include it in concurrency. There are many things that we measure and that we track, because concurrency isn't, again, the only thing we do to plan and improve our transportation system. So I just want to make sure to be clear that while we're not, what did you say, speaking in superlatives, that I did say we should measure it. But I don't know that we have to add it to concurrency, not if that means that we're going to be wasting time and money on going through an exercise of adding it and then somehow exempting it. Yes, let's measure it. Let's understand. Let's absolutely measure it so that we can see how, when we do other things in our transportation system, we can ease the burden on that section of roadway, because that's exactly what we will be doing if we could get started on the TMP, right? Because the best way to improve the traffic flow on East Lake Samamish Parkway is to provide additional alternatives, like transit, right? That is going to be a primary way to get people to the light rail stop that opens up in Redmond. And the best thing we can do is to get as many residents from Samamish to light rail other than in their individual cars. But we haven't spent any time as a Council working on that, and that's what I think we need to get to. So I'm all for transparency. I'm all for measuring and sharing that information. What I'm not for is wasting time and money to do it for some exercise. I want to do it for a purpose, and I want to be able to show the value to our residents of what we're doing and how that's actually going to help them. So I think if we focused on transit, not only will it get our residents around faster, but it'll also improve the traffic, right? It will reduce the number of cars, as opposed to just continuing to reduce the size of the streets, and it will help our environment. It will help our streams and our lakes, and it'll help our fish, right? The worst thing we can do to the environment is drive around in our individual cars, so.
So Council, I want to try and keep us on track-
So council, I want to try and keep us on track here, and I think we're getting sidetracked a little bit with our conversation. And we're into second rounds here, which is fine to go ahead and finish. But I think the council, staff is asking us option one or option two. And we're getting sidetracked a little bit. So I want to make sure that we stay on task, or we're going to be here till 11 o'clock at night again, still trying to figure out option one or option two. So, Councilmember Hornish.
Took the words right out of my mouth. If you use the Venn diagrams, the two choices that we're being faced, both include East Lake Semamish Parkway. So we got off on a tangent as to whether or not we should even be considering a volume measurement. And I think we need to refocus, as we've already made that decision to look at it. So now the choices are, do we include all the principles and minor arterials? Or do we include just the East Lake Semamish Parkway and 244th on the north? That's the decision and discussion for tonight.
Yes. Or at least right in front of us at the moment.
Well, that's the first, that's the first decision tree.
Yes.
And you opened it up for discussion, and we kind of went a different way. But if we could refocus that, I would suggest that same thing.
Yep. Councilmember Valderrama.
I would go back and make a motion that we exclude East Lake Semamish Parkway from concurrency. And that way, we facilitate the Venn diagram even further out there. As Councilmember Stewart said, we can continue to measure it later on as part of the TMP or the other, but we make it clear to our citizens that we're not trying to bankrupt them, and we're not trying to stop growth by it and kind of against the GMA that you can't do. And so I would say, I would make that motion that we exclude East Lake Semamish Parkway from concurrency.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Ritchie.
While it is relative to the motion, but it's also relative to Councilmember Hornish's insight, that we're essentially seeing the same thing at this policy tree decision matrix that's been provided by staff. The opportunity we have, whichever decision we pick on this policy tree decision, we still have the opportunity to, we're gaining insight, but we're also creating the opportunity, we're not losing the opportunity to lower the level of service based upon, to F potentially, based upon the insight we gain from measuring, whether it's the policy, you know, the yellow, the policy decision on the East Lake Semamish Parkway 244th only, or principles and minors. We're still gaining insight, and we still retain the opportunity to lower the level of service, or, not lower, whatever, put the level of service at F if need be. Is that accurate?
The exception is excluding.
Okay. So the difference between excluding it from the conversation concurrency-wise, and retaining the opportunity, and then including it, but retaining the opportunity to lower the level of service is what? That's what I need to understand to try to make a decision.
There really, effectively is no difference between those two.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Following up on what Councilmember Ritchie talked about with respect to level of service F, for all intensive purposes, there's no difference between exempting it or calling it F. However, from a process standpoint, unless there's an emergency ordinance, as I understand it, you can only update the comp plan annually. So is level of service on that same update schedule? In other words, can you have a more frequent update of level of service versus the segments that are in the concurrency?
My understanding is you have the LOS in your comp plan, and so it's going to require a comp plan amendment to change those, so that would be the once-a-year unless.
Okay, so it is. It's essentially the same in all respects.
I think in all likelihood, the parkway would have to be exempted, because the way I see this problem break down is one of two scenarios. One, and I'd still like to see if you have a capacity table, because it should be nice to know what we're making a decision on specifically. I think we're all running on the assumption that it's failing with whatever Florida has, but it'd be nice to see what those numbers look like, so we're not making our decision with our head in the sand. But I think the question, assuming we can see that capacity table, is, do we exempt the parkway, assuming it's failing? And if we exempt it from concurrency, then the result of that is basically unchecked numbers of vehicles. You can say we can measure it, but for concurrency purposes, vehicles can go down the parkway and not trigger a failure of any kind. So we're exacerbating an existing problem. What Kim read out of the RCWs or the WAC, whichever one it came from, stated locally owned facilities. So if we're defining the problem as being in Redmond, we can't really touch the problem, nor can we even use impact fees outside of our jurisdiction. But if we decide not to exempt the parkway, regardless of the scenario, I think you are choosing then to sidle your taxpayers with an oppressive tax burden, assuming, I mean, we have no idea what that magnitude would be, but I think we're running on the assumption that it would be exponentially expensive, or somebody would have already thought of it by now. But I would love to be able to see what you have, because I think that allows us to make a more educated decision about exemption or not. Is it possible to see that?
I don't have that with me tonight. Mostly because we're trying to get answers from you. And I actually do want to redirect this and ask one question of council. The whole point of, actually, this slide was to understand, are you looking for us to do segment analysis on all city, primary and minor arterials? Or are we interested in just doing it in a few locations where we do not have concurrency intersections? Those are two very different pieces of work. And the reason why we haven't done it is if you want it citywide, there's a lot of QC and a lot of work that we need to do. If it's really just for a couple of locations, we can turn that around fairly quickly.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I'm going to go to my slides, Lita, that I had sent, and Slide number one, first of all. And again, we've known that that road has been failing since they turned it over. Even if we say it has a wee bit more to go today because of situations, it's still failing. And so what are we doing to our citizens and that? And so it's interesting, because we've talked about the WAC and of that. And I found a comment, a legal comment that was made on a state document, that I then went and approached the state MRSC legal attorneys to look at it. And so you could put Slide one up, and then follow that with three and four. But let's go first on the first slide, where the legal opinion, the initial legal opinion that I had found, starts to go back and says, you know, people are starting to get tighter about their budgets and voter resistance to tax increases. And then, as you see in the underline, "If probable funding for programmed improvements fail to materialize, whether through failure of grant funding, or voter disapproval, or otherwise, the responsible jurisdiction must raise additional funds, reassess its land use assumptions, or reduce the facility's levels of service." And by the way, reassess land use does not mean downzone. It means put in transit, that you're forced to go in, and you're supposed to be doing a number of other things. It is not the downzoning. Slide number three, if you'll pass me. So I went back to MSRC and said, "We'd like to be able to understand, what does that specifically say as far as the RCWs?" And the RCWs say, according to the state, that the GMA regulations explicitly prohibit the use of concurrency to prevent growth. And they give you the WAC over there. Counties and cities should set levels of services to reflect realistic expectations consistent with the achievement of growth aims. Setting the levels of services too high could, under some regulatory strategies, result in no growth. As a deliberate policy, this would be contrary to that act." The next slide, please. This is from the legal consultants at MRSC. "From a legal standpoint, they would be concerned of a situation where a city was not taking active steps to alleviate their level of service deficiencies." Remember the first slide, that you basically put your citizens on the hook. "If the existence of levels of service deficiencies becomes a basis for denying development application, it would lend to legal claims against the city that it is not meeting its responsibilities under the GMA. This type of situation should also be carefully reviewed by a city's legal counsel." So by going down this road and trying to keep it in, knowing that 30 years ago, or 20 years ago, as Councilmember Moran said, and 10 years ago, that they've come to us and tell us, what are we really trying to do? Let's just exclude it. Back at March 5th, as I recall, when I was talking about, hey, let's put a $50 million limit on our bond to fix roads. Nobody wanted to go there. And Councilmember Hornish talked about the four points. Let's come up with a methodology. Let's go down. And then if the funding turns out to be too excessive, let's go back and revisit the issues. Well, we know that this is just so exorbitant, it would bankrupt our city here. So instead of going down what we know, what we've been told by King County, by Redmond, by WASDOT, over and over, let's just exclude it. We can continue to do the analysis, but outside of concurrency, so that we're not wasting our staff's time, we're not raising exacerbation, not only with our own citizens that are looking at backbreaking taxes that really nobody could afford, and not starting to get sued by the county and the state for violations of it. So I say again, what are we trying to do? What's the end game? Let them get it to measure, but keep it out of this. Simplify the work that they have to do under concurrency. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more comment, but I think we need to, again, be able to answer staff's question that is before us.
Oh, you have a motion on the table.
Okay, so.
We have a motion on the table.
To exclude the parkway.
That's correct.
Councilmember Hornish.
I'd like to make a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Remember, it's got to be seconded to call the question if we're, if there's still lights on.
Second.
Okay, great.
Well, you need, well, we need five.
Did you?
We need five people.
That's right. We need to, so, okay, it's been moved and seconded and discussion on that. Okay, all those in favor of calling the question?
Can we repeat the motion, please?
No, no, no. The motion is to call the question.
Call the question right now.
And that's what we're voting on, is whether or not to call the question.
Call the question.
So you need five votes to call the question?
Yes.
Because there's another light on.
Okay.
All those in favor. Aye. All those opposed? Okay. I didn't hear anything down at this end. Was that aye?
I'm an aye.
Okay. So by vote of 7-0, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is to exclude the parkway. What was your motion exactly? I just...
To exclude the East Lake Semamish Parkway from the concurrency.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five-two.
Five-two. It passes. It will be excluded from concurrency. Okay. Can we now answer staff's question? Because it was northern intersection, so that would leave then the singular intersection of 244th then, if we do...
The segment.
Segment.
Segment. Well, from northeast state to the jurisdictional border. Okay. Councilmember Ritchie.
I would like to suggest, or I don't know if this is a motion, or I would like to see that we only focus on 244th. I think we're getting enough information from the other intersections, so I think we should move with the amended staff recommendation. That would be my direction. And I guess that's a motion at this point, or were we...
I move that we move with the staff direction, the one on the far right here, decision tree, amended to remove East Lake Semamish Parkway, but to include 244th, north of 8th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Stewart.
Can we, can we get through some of this other information to see what this would entail?
There's a motion on the floor, though.
Oh. So we can't have that be part of the discussion?
Well, that's kind of what I was trying to get at before, was if we could see something else.
Can that be part of the discussion to know what the...
He can withdraw his motion if he wants to.
Never mind.
If not, there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion, a second, now there's discussion, right?
There is. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Kendra, would it be possible for you to provide some more detail as to what we are going to be including in this motion, specifically dealing with your suggestion that we use the one-way and AM/PM peak hours?
I could do the remainder of the presentation just very fast. And maybe that would save everybody. It's 80 degrees out there right now, so just putting it out there if you want to go outside. So to answer the question, so again, and we're going to focus this in on just 244th north of northeast state, because I think that's the analysis that's on the table, which I think is a really good place to start. So beyond looking at just that section, the next question is whether or not we're looking at segments or quarters. As you know, the 2015 comprehensive plan included, you know, includes well over 40 segments, but those are rolled up into about 10 quarters. Maybe because we're just focusing on 244th, I'm going to actually remove that focus here, because we're just talking about that. So if we were looking at just 244th, staff's recommendation is going to be option two in this case, which is to look at segments. So I think there's two segments along 244th currently. And Cheryl and I could get back to you, or we could look very closely at one of the maps I have on a future slide. There are two. It's essentially broken up in half there.
Two adopted, just to clarify.
Two adopted segments, correct.
Because there were more suggested, there were more suggested segments in 2017, which may be germane to the conversation. There's not. I'm looking at it. We had segment 35, 36, 37A, and 37B.
Well, we're talking, we're talking north of northeast 8th only.
Okay, okay. So north, okay. That's the difference.
Not southeast 8th.
Okay.
And there were no changes between 2015 and 2017 in that portion of 244th.
As far as, I'm sorry, between when and when?
Essentially from north, north of northeast state.
The dates, though.
Pardon?
The dates that you just used.
Between the 2015 adopted comprehensive plan and the draft 2017 update, which was unadopted, and was brought forth to council last summer.
Thank you for that clarification.
So essentially, our question was, should we be doing, say, you know, quarter averaging, which is kind of the previous, or should we just look at the two segments individually? And staff recommendation, since we're just talking about 244th, is actually to look at the segments individually. I think this addresses council concern of segment averaging. The next question is, where should those segment boundaries be? Actually, if we're just talking about 244th, I'm going to blow through this, because there were no changes here. So we don't need council direction on this, unless we'd like to relook at those segment boundaries. That's something we would be open to. And for just a single segment, that's something we could certainly revisit as needed. Time period for the analysis, and this is where it gets interesting. The 2015 comprehensive plan, of course, looked at all average weekday daily traffic, so it averaged volumes that were collected all day from a Monday to a Friday, 24-hour volumes. Second option is to actually look at the segment operations based on the peak hour. So look specifically at the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. And we could actually tie those times to when we're doing the intersection peak hours, just to be looking at the same period. In that case, we'd be looking at traffic data that was collected on a Tuesday and a Thursday. So our staff recommendation is to use peak hour traffic volumes as it's more responsive to the peak congestion issues that impact driver experience that council has raised as an interest here. We had put as a potential con point is that, you know, when we're starting to look at peaking conditions, that could potentially result in more locations with identified capital improvements. So again, but that all relies on where do you set the standard in terms of how much congestion is acceptable. One-way versus two-way volumes, that's kind of the next big question. The 2015 comprehensive plan, of course, used, it looked at daily traffic volumes. And we're looking, when we're looking at traffic volumes over the course of an entire day, it makes sense that you're looking at two-way, because in theory, the same number of people are coming in, are leaving and returning to the city over the course of a day. That should be relatively balanced. When we start looking at peak hour, though, however, it may make sense to look at directional volumes. As you know, more people are heading northbound in the morning, more people are heading southbound in the evening. And so it would give us the opportunity to observe those congestion issues and set our level of service standard around directional traffic. So our recommendation is to go with directional traffic volumes, particularly if we're just talking about 244th. The pro, again, is that this is more responsive to peak hour congestion. The con... The con is that, again, this could lead to more capital improvement needs, and we did have a strong concern about doing this if we're doing it citywide, but for a single segment, this may not be a bad way to go. Lastly, and this is what the mayor was asking for, was the capacities, and I don't have at my disposal for 244th today what the FDOT capacities are for that roadway, but I will say that, you know, FDOTs capacities, they take into consideration the speed of the roadway, so really it's just a question of whether it's 40 miles an hour or less, the presence of turn lanes and the presence of medians, and those are rooted in HCM procedures and methodologies. So the capacities, I'd say, are much better grounded and documented than what you have in T8 today. Our staff recommendation is to go with these FDOT methodologies. Again, I think it's really for that level of documentation. It also moves away from the non-motorized facilities that had been a concern for council. On the other hand, non-motorized improvements like trails and sidewalks would no longer count towards concurrency, and that's potentially a downside. And then lastly, and the, probably the, you know, the biggest issue, which council has already picked up on, is it all is on where do we set that standard? What is acceptable and what is not? So your current level of service policy, it has a VC. I think you all understand the mechanics of T8. I explained that earlier today. It's based on how much, you know, the capacities that you've calculated, and then is the volume that's using that facility more or less than that capacity? Is it less than one or more than one? FDOT does actually provide, actually, some guidance around what is level of service A look like in a VC ratio, all the way down to what does level of service F look like? So those LOS grades are ultimately, of course, based on volume to capacity ratios. We recommend...
I'm sorry, did you say it does or does not provide any guidance as to the level of services?
It does.
It does. Okay, I'm sorry, I just missed it.
And lastly, our recommendation is probably, particularly, we're just talking about one segment, is option one with modifications. And that does not mean go back to T8. What option one with methodologies means, probably would just need to say, okay, particularly if we're going to peak hour and by peak direction, I don't know if level of service C makes a lot of sense. So to give you kind of an analogy, this is, 244th is a minor arterial. Your intersection level of service standard for a minor arterial is level of service C. But when we're talking about an intersection, what that, when it's talking about the delay that's being calculated there, it's taking into account both the congested approaches to that intersection and the uncongested approaches to that intersection, and it's averaging that experience. If we're measuring kind of the peak direction by peak hour, it's not to say that you couldn't pick a level of service standard, but we'd want, we'd caution council to be very careful because we don't want you to set it so high that suddenly you're needing to widen that roadway to something that's beyond what would be desirable in a suburban context. So I appreciate, that was a lot of information, but we made it all the way through. Here's, again, that chart of kind of the decision tree there, and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So I think I want to remind council first, before we launch into a bunch of questions, that there's a motion on the floor. So, and that motion was to look at 244th on the north end. Yes.
I'm sorry for interrupting. If I can also maybe lower sort of the difficulty is, the difficulty of making the decision right now, we don't really expect, if you can give us a decision...
Be closer to the mic.
If the council can give us a direction tonight, that would be great. We certainly can, you know, run some numbers and bring them back to you to provide you more information. So again, if you feel like we've been able to provide enough information thus far for you to give us a decision, that would be great. But again, we can certainly run some numbers and bring them back to you.
Okay, Councilmember Hornish.
I have a question about the discussion you just had. Can you go to slide 17? I'm looking, I'm trying to understand the Florida DOT methodology.
Yes, thank you.
It had, it all, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it the first time. There is interrupted flow facilities there, and that does give capacities. And that kind of goes back to an earlier comment I heard tonight, that the highway capacity doesn't apply because it's highways.
Yeah.
Just flat wrong because it talks about interrupted flow roads in urban areas. So highway capacity is a very good methodology. But Florida has adopted it and done some more. So I'm sorry, I read it quick and I just saw uninterrupted flow, but I missed the interrupted flow. So it does take into account an interrupted flow calculation and methodology under the HCM. Okay, thank you.
That is correct. Can you go through this, the interrupted flow facilities and define what these numbers are? Obviously, we're not looking at divided anything. It's undivided. But what is C, D, and the numbers they have there? Can you explain that?
Well, these are hourly. So first of all, to go to the very top of the table, and, you know, I realize it's hard to see on the slide here, these are called generalized peak hour directional volumes. For Florida's urbanized areas, feels like Florida outside, but, so when we talk about peak hour, so generalized, well, I won't define that, but, so these are peak hour volumes, and they're directional volumes. So it's during a peak hour, let's say 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., or 4:45 to 5:45 p.m. in one direction, so northbound in the morning on 244th, that would be a directional volume that we're looking at here. We're talking about a roadway, and I can't, I don't remember what the speed of 244th is, if it's 40 miles an hour or...
35.
I think it's 35.
35 or 30.
Okay, so it likely be the lower class-two roadway, and undivided one lane in a given direction, and the level of service for it to be level of service E or better, no more than 800 vehicles going in one direction. So that's kind of how to interpret that. There are a few other things, adjustment factors here, and I'm not going to do the math totally on the spot here, but if we have things like a left turn lane, a right turn lane, there are some adjustment factors there. They're about, they can add 5% to the capacity, and so there are some, these factors are smaller.
And just to clarify, that's peak hour capacity.
Correct. Correct.
Councilmember Stewart.
No, I'm sorry. This is exactly what I was going to ask you to go back and walk us through. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
So my motion is to follow staff recommendation and to provide you with as much clarity and specificity as possible, and so I would like to call the question on that.
Second?
You don't need a second, there's no lights. It's only if there's somebody else who wants to speak. So, okay, the motion is to...
Can I ask a clarifying question about the motion? Is the motion to just provide staff with direction to get us numbers back?
The motion was to look at 244th. That's what his original motion was, unless he wants to amend it.
To look at 244th, to include it in concurrency period, or to get staff to get us numbers back, and then we make a decision? That's what my question is.
My motion, that I'm happy to speak to...
Thank you.
...is to provide staff with as much clarity and specificity as possible so that they can return the information and data with as much speed as possible and as much clarity as possible, focusing on 244th, the Florida Department of Transportation model, everything that the staff has recommended. That makes sense to me, and that's why I'm moving that motion now, so that you can report back to us as soon as possible with that data.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any more lights on at this juncture. And the question was called, but then we started talking. I think we're back to the question, which is, the motion was to look at 244th with all the hoochaman that Councilmember Ritchie just gave with it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. What was that, four, three?
Why don't we...
Ayes, can they raise their hand, please? Three, and the nays? Four. It fails. Okay. So if I could make a quick comment here, I would be really interested in looking at the numbers. Again, it is very hard for us to make an educated decision on this without understanding the implications of those decisions. I would like to look at 244th because I think, right now, I don't have the numbers on an hourly basis to know whether that peak flow is 800 or greater. I suspect it's not, based on previous iterations of capacity that we have. I know what the numbers are on an average weekly daily traffic, and they were nowhere near failing, even if you removed all of the controversial elements, because the base capacity we used was 12,850, and the volumes on 244th are much lower than that. So I suspect this road is not failing, and to keep it out of concurrency, I think would be doing a huge disservice.
But that's not what Jason, you've just voted against what you just asked for.
Because I want to know the data. We're voting on something...
I thought we just did that.
That's what he asked for.
That's what he asked for.
He asked for staff to get the data.
He asked to get the data.
But to include it in it. I just, I would like to see what the data is before we take a vote on something.
That's what he said. That was he...
I thought your motion was to include it.
No, that's why I asked for the clarification.
No, to look at the data.
So, revote?
Your motion, without, okay. The original motion, which I wrote down, was the motion to look at 244th.
So should we revote or...
Let's clarify, let's clarify the question because it was...
Kendra? Hi. I just want, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know you're trying to keep up, and I'm, me too. So I just want to clarify, what my motion was before it was voted down, was to ask you to provide the data specific to what your decision tree was, the staff recommendations. You don't have the data right now. You're asking, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm trying to clarify, you're asking us which point do you want, is council asking staff to look into, major and minor arterials or 244th only? Is that correct? My motion was to ask you to look at 244th only and to report back as soon as possible. That's it. So was I ambiguous?
And I think we, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, I wrote down the original motion, and that's what I had in front of me. So the stuff that you said before, when I was typing my questions, I didn't hear, other than the fact that the motion was to look at 244th and the other stuff, so...
Only.
Should we vote again?
Only. It was 244th only, correct?
Right.
And I think that's...
To get the data...
Get the data for 244th. And bring it back to council.
To then make a decision, as to whether or not to include it.
I want to get some clarification on this decision tree because we skipped over a whole bunch of the options as we went, after Jason made his motion. Then we went through all of these decision tree options, and somewhere in here, I think it was probably further back on the options, we were looking at segment or corridor. Did we give you that information yet?
Given that it's...
By defining it by 244th.
Our staff recommendation with 244th, if it's just that, it would be to stay with the segments. More time at two segments.
Right, and then the time period, AM/PM peak hour, directional capacity level, service threshold. And Jason's motion to look at 244th only, where is the question about only?
That was his motion.
Preceded.
It says north of northeast state.
Okay, so way up on the scope, way, way, way back up here. So I think what I had typed earlier was, I think probably what Councilmember Hornish is getting at, is what does that look like when replicated over the rest of the city? I don't know. I don't know that it's technically relevant when we have levels of intersections covering the other spots, but I think that's probably the question that you have. Okay. Councilmember Ross. Okay, he had his light on. So we can revote then, if you want to add that specifically back in. Yes? Oh, on that specific motion? Or can, because I voted in the negative, can I bring it back up?
Someone could ask for it to be reconsidered.
I would like to ask that the vote be reconsidered.
Okay, very good. Any more discussion?
No.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Hornish.
Now that we have clarification on what the motion is, that it's 244th only, I think that is, it's a heck of a lot less work, certainly understand that, but I don't know why we're spending it for one little segment.
Thank you.
If we wanted to have a volume over capacity type of LOS measurement, and we're going to do it now on such a small segment of our overall arterials, I don't even think that's worthwhile, frankly. I'd rather do it citywide, without the Parkway.
Councilmember Ritchie.
So the reason why I think 244th is critical is because it is a road that is expandable. It is something we can do something about. It isn't prohibitively expensive. It still runs up against the city boundary before it touches SR202. I appreciate that that's still the problem, but it is a road that does not have intersections on it, and the Councilmember Moran's motion last meeting, this is part of the problem that made her question and her motion so relevant to me, which is we are not identifying all of, we're not measuring through intersectional LOS all of the potential roads or egress-ingress points that we can. And by taking a look at this, by adding these two segments in, we are adding information. We're gathering data on a road that we can potentially do something about. The reason East Lake Smamish Parkway was taken out is because I think we agreed that whatever we find on there would be prohibitively expensive, but that may not, I don't think it's the case, on 244th. So I think it's worthwhile as an exercise in terms of getting the information on 244th for folks that live on the east side, that are trying to get out onto SR202, that take that road every morning, deal with Inglewood, you deal with, you know, Margaret Mead, all those schools that are out there. I mean, we need to be, we don't have enough information coming in and out of that major road, and I think this accomplishes that.
Councilmember Stewart.
So Councilmember Ritchie, I appreciate that, and I think you're right. I think, though, I want to channel your words from last week, which is, we have an intersection level of service concurrency model that staff has worked on for many months. We have a comp plan amendment that's teed up. We have code amendments that are teed up. Because those are being done in an emergency capacity, we have another opportunity this calendar year, if we wanted to make a minor adjustment to allow staff time to do this analysis and add that back in later this year, we certainly can. But I don't know that we need to tie up all that other work that's sitting there queued up for two segments on one road. So that, just to kind of throw that out there, that it just feels like we pulled the emergency stop break because we thought there was somebody on the tracks, but maybe it was just a shadow? I don't know.
May I respond to that?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. If I haven't been clear about this exercise and how I feel about it, then, you know, that's another conversation. What we're trying to do is get to four votes. You know, how do we get to a majority, and what components are needed to get to four votes? And to be completely transparent, where we at, we are at as of last week is, we do not have four votes to move forward with the current intersection level of service plan as it stands right now. Councilmember Moran offered a motion, the staff came back with what they recommend as possibilities, a direction. They think that there may be some validity, and I agree, to researching one or two or, you know, both, one of the other options, both options, of this policy decision tree. My motion originally, and that's being reconsidered, is to give staff back that direction. They've come to us, we're going back to them, we're creating that conversation, that if we do look at 220 or 244th, they're going to come back to us, maybe by September 4th, wouldn't that be awesome? And then we can have that discussion at that point. Even if you get the information before then, that might help us to be able to set some things in motion, and that may help us get to that fourth vote that we need to be able to have an intersection level of service that now potentially may be modified. And once we get there, we might be able to move forward with comp plans and code amendments and such. So that's why I think coming back to you with some specific response to your specific questions matters a lot. That's where I'm at.
Okay. So I do think having capacity across the city would be a good idea, but I know we've already exempted one of those roads, and so I think at this juncture, and I was referencing trying to look at a map to see what might be left truly uncovered, and I think...
Have a motion on the floor?
We do. We do. But we can have discussion. And it's really 244th, and the... And the option here is, we either look at it, or we ignore it. And so, I'd rather look at 244th, so. Okay. I don't have any more lights on. All those in favor of looking at 244th and the data behind them, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Five-two? Sorry. Okay. Motion passes.
244th only.
Yep.
Do you have what you need, Kendra? Are we good?
One more slide. Oh, we're so close. So, this is our last slide. So, once you've provided us direction, we'll need about a month to prepare the whole proposal with all the, all the information. So, you know, we might be able to get some information to you before the, your first meeting in September, maybe even late August. But, no, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to overpromise, underdeliver. So, right now, we're just estimating about a month. So, thank you for your direction. I do want to remind the council that there are several additional tasks to do if the proposal that we brought to council last week does not stand as is. So, we would, of course, need to revise the transportation element again, revise the related codes. We'd have to send the comprehensive plan to the Department of Commerce for their review again and approval. We will need to amend our SEPA, and then, of course, have a public comment period for the amended SEPA. And then, you will need to conduct two public hearings. I mean, I suppose you might be able to hold one public hearing, I'm sorry, two public hearings on the same day. That, that would be, you know, up to the council. But there would be, need to be a separate public hearing for the comprehensive plan adoption, and then another one for the code changes.
Cheryl, if I can do, sorry, I've got several lights up here, so I suspect they have some questions for you along the way. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I have a procedural question, which is, can we schedule those public hearings now? Or do we need to have some, a draft in hand before we can schedule those public hearings? Because I know we need to give a 30-day notice for those public hearings. Is that correct?
For, yep, for...
I think we had a conversation with Jeff Thomas about this at the agenda meeting, right?
For which, which motion are you looking for?
Not a motion. Whether or not we, what a public hearings planning would look like.
Right here, Cheryl has laid out all the work that has to be done. So, staff has to do all the work of updating the comprehensive plan, transportation element, the related codes, review with the Department of Commerce, right? And amend SEPA. We have a public comment period, and we have two public hearings. So, I'm trying to understand, can we schedule those now and get them on the calendar now? Or do we have to wait until we have draft something for people to see before we can schedule those? And that's what I want to understand, is...
You're trying to be efficient.
I am.
Yeah.
Darn it.
You again.
Good evening, council. Jeff Thomas, Community Development. The answer is yes.
Yes, we can schedule them now.
Thank you.
Great. So, I'd like to...
Within a timely period, the 30-day minimum. Correct.
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule those public comment periods and public hearings right now.
For what date?
For, well, if they need a month, then we should be able to do it on September 4th, because that would be six weeks. So, let's shoot for September 4th.
Look at Cheryl's face.
I know, Cheryl, sorry. But we don't, we only have two meetings in September, so...
You got to bring that back to you.
So, my boss tells me, at least I think he's still my boss, if we schedule the hearing tonight, or, I mean, you know, in three days, and if the council decides not to incorporate the segments, you have to cancel that hearing, you have to set another 30-days' notice to hold another hearing on the packet that you have in front of you.
So, what you're telling me, though, so what you're telling me, though, then, given that, is that there's no, there's no way on the calendar right now that we could, whether we go with this, or even if we go with what's already baked, because we canceled the public hearing on the code amendments, that there's no possible way that we can have the public hearings and make a decision prior to having to decide whether to extend the moratorium or not. That's what I'm hearing.
How the moratorium, I will have to defer to council...
Because the moratorium expires on October 3rd. We have two meetings in September. So, if we don't get those, if we don't get the meetings, the public hearings scheduled prior to having the data to analyze, then there's no way that we can accomplish this before the October 3rd deadline. That's what I'm hearing.
Mayor Malcho?
Yes, please.
You, to set the public hearing, the public needs enough information to know what they're, you're going to be considering that night. And so, when staff has that amount of information, then they could set the public hearing. Mayor Malcho can do that during an agenda meeting. A majority of council can do that. And the city manager could do that as well, on the, on an agenda. And so, the decision would be made, we're going to put this on an agenda for September 4th, and so, we're going to send out this notice by August 4th.
Right. But, but we don't have any meeting scheduled between now and September 4th.
So, you would not be able to do that, then, as a council majority? Because tonight, you don't have enough information to let, give the public notice of what you're going to be holding the public hearing on. But if that were to come before August 4th, that public hearing could be...
Well, they just said they needed a month to get us that data.
They may be able to word it broadly enough so that, and I don't know, not a traffic engineer, but we may be able to word it broadly enough to give people an idea of what is going to be considered at that public hearing, so that they can comment on it. You don't have to have the exact draft ordinance, but I'm just throwing out options.
Councilmember Hornish.
I want to, as, as we've been talking, we're trying to make sure we understand what we're approving as a council. And I think, and I appreciate where we're at, but I missed my opportunity earlier. We decided 244th only, but I'm not sure we decided segments, AM, PM versus average weekday traffic, one-way, two-way. Well, Florida DOT, there's no choices. And V over C versus LOS. I want to clarify that all of the staff, for the council, I guess, all of the staff recommendations is the information that you're asking them to bring back. So, there is, there is a decision on that, but I'm not sure it was very clear. Was that the council, I didn't vote for it, but I mean, the people who voted for it, is you're okay with all the checkmarks there in those decisions as well?
I don't, did we, we didn't actually go through all of that specifically?
No, that's my point. That's my point. All we talked about was 244th only. The first, the top decision tree.
Yeah.
I think it was implied that it's all the staff recommendations with the checkmarks, but it's not clear.
No. I think, yeah, I think we as council probably, go ahead.
We heard that the motion was, bring back information on all the checkmarks. We can certainly, you know, we...
That was, I'm sorry.
Okay. All the checkmarks, that was not, I don't think...
I don't think that was, that was not said, I don't think. I didn't say the words "all checkmarks." I said "staff recommendations," so...
Okay, but that's, that's ambiguous. I think all staff recommendations that we've gone through so far are all the staff recommendations that we haven't even gotten to yet. That, I don't think that was clear.
I'm not sure how red check next to staff recommendations could be more clear.
I would agree. That wasn't clear to me.
My understanding was that you were talking specifically about what we had already gone through.
Went through the whole...
I understand, very quickly, we went through it, but we certainly didn't have a discussion about whether, I certainly had comments about that.
If, if that's your understanding and everybody agrees, then I'll withdraw my comment. I just wanted to make it clear.
I, that, that was not my understanding, that we had, we wanted to look at 244th, but, I mean...
Do we need to have a re-vote then?
I have to withdraw my motion, because I have a motion on the floor.
You do, to, yes.
So, if we can get, I think, based on my motion, I think we're about to get a comment here, and then we can back up if we need to, if you...
Okay, thank you. Steve Landeszewski, Public Works Director. Good evening, council, city attorney, staff, and guests. A couple of thoughts. So, a question that might help this. For 244th, since it is a relatively small part of the city's roadway network, whatever boxes are checked as far as staff recommendations, if other elements were added to that, is it that much more work at this point to come back in September to show all of the items that might be considered?
We can do that. We can provide all the information, so that there are full array of choices is there.
That's not a huge issue. The issue we have, I think, is the two, you have a level of service product that was brought forward and is where it is. It's not here today, right? What we're talking about is amending that with maybe some sort of segment look on 244th. I think the hearing that you could talk about having would be re-hosting whatever we had before. That's safe, that's fair, that's there. Because we may come back and you may see, the 244th element of this has very little impact in the current, and then the six-year pipeline work look. It may be moot. I don't know. We'll bring those informations to you. So, that would be a safe, post it for the 4th, the 18th, whatever the dates are, one or the other. Or we come back on the 4th, show you the stuff, and then we have to integrate changes to add the segments, because we have to go back and add that segment work to the current analysis.
But, but that, so to my question, there is no way to move forward with a public hearing that would include this additional work that we could get done before the October 3rd deadline?
Right. What you could gamble on is re-advertising the work that's been done.
Yep.
Knowing, or assuming we get to the 244th show, that there is maybe nothing that is of a concern. Not that the road isn't being built out through development standards as we speak, turn lanes added, you know, analysis had. You can see turn pockets being developed on the 244th corridor north of northeast Eight. But, I don't want to put any information out there that I don't have, and we don't have the full run. We can do that. So, again, safely speaking, you could re-advertise level of service concurrency analysis only as previously presented and go through that. And no, you could cancel it when you hear what is brought forward about 244th.
Then I would like to amend my motion, and I would like to move that we schedule two public hearings for the September 4th, for the intersection-only level of service, comp plan amendments, and code change amendments. And then, we'll get information back from staff, and if we want to change our mind at that point, we can keep our pattern going and reverse our decision once again, or we can move forward. But I don't see any other way that we even have a possibility of having a decision prior to having to decide to extend the moratorium or not. Unless anybody else has any ideas.
So, I, just for clarification, so this would not be incorporating what we voted on today? Your motion is what we had last week. Is that accurate?
Correct. That doesn't mean that staff doesn't go do this work and bring it back to us. But the public hearings, as I understand it, there would, there's no way for us to get public hearings scheduled by the 4th, including this new information, or in September, including this new information, because we don't have a council meeting to make that decision a month before any of our September meetings.
Oh, first, I need a motion to extend.
I move that we extend 15 minutes. We can be quick.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay in.
So, you're a yes?
Like the way you say it.
Okay, five votes, seven-zero. The motion passes. I want to inject one thought into what you said, which is, a council meeting could be added later. We could agree to have a council meeting while we are on recess.
But it would have to be...
I understand, the 30-day...
Right.
Second.
Councilmember Ritchie, did you have a...
I want to second the motion made by Councilmember Stewart.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes.
In all practical purposes...
Wait, hold on. Councilmember Ritchie's.
I'd like to defer to Councilmember Ross, please.
What would that actually achieve for us? We end up changing, so then we're back 30-days forward from that date.
What it, what it would do is, it would give us the chance to adopt the new intersection-only level of service as our concurrency model. We would have, on September 4th, for the first time, we would have the analysis, or we may view it ahead of time, but it would be the first time we could vote as a council whether we wanted to, you know, do anything with that. And again, we have another opportunity this calendar year to add that in if we want to, because we have another round of comp, comp plan amendments that we can still do. So, so we could do that. Otherwise, we have no way of amending our concurrency model prior to the October expiration of the moratorium. And we would either have to let it expire and not make any changes, or we'd have to, right, extend it. So, those would be the only, the only options at that point.
So, essentially, you're leaving a three-month window under the intersection level of service only concurrency plan before you modify it by the end of the year?
No, probably not three months, because we would do it well before Christmas. So, we would be adopting it in September. We would probably adopt it in a one- or two-month period of time, right? So, it'd be October, maybe November, right? So, so we're talking maybe 60 days.
Staff may want to inject themselves into this conversation, because there are other comp plan changes that would then have to be done on round two. We can't do it a third time, and I think there was a timeline of November on that.
So, November. So, that's still not three months. That's well less than three months.
Was that a yes on...
I think Jeff probably can speak to those.
I was just talking with Steve, maybe another option. Mayor, I don't think that this addresses the question that you just posed.
Can you put the mic closer?
Oh, I apologize. So, here's another option, and certainly Jeff and can, certainly, he needs to weigh in. And Mayor, this doesn't necessarily answer the question that you just posed, but maybe an option is to hold, schedule the hearing for September 18th, both hearings, for the comp plan and the code, for intersections and the segments. That way, that'll give us a study session and two business meetings to discuss the options. If you choose to not add the segments, is it possible at the hearing that you just say, we don't want the segments? We only, yes, we only want the intersections? And not have the segments as part of concurrency?
I think that's a Kim question.
Yeah, the challenges that you might have...
But we already held that public hearing, technically speaking. Did we not?
Well, we did for the comp plan, but not the code amendments.
Right. And the code amendments potentially would change.
Technically, you only have to hold it on the code amendments.
The comp plan amendments or the code amendments?
The code amendments. You already held...
Well, we didn't do it on the code amendments, right?
Right. You did it on the comp plan amendments.
With out segments.
Without segments.
Yep. So, but the question they had was, could we schedule a public hearing on September 18th for comp plan and code amendments that include intersection and segments, but then on the 18th, decide not to include the segments?
Sure. I don't know. I mean, that would be your decision. That would be your vote that night, not to include segments.
Okay.
Yep, that's a go.
Okay. But that's not the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to schedule two public hearings September 4th for intersection level of service only and the code changes. Councilmember Ritchie, do you have a comment?
Yep, I do. Would Councilmember, what's your name? Councilmember Stewart? Councilmember Stewart? Sorry, it's getting squarely time. Would you be willing to entertain a friendly motion concurrent with Staff Member Cheryl's recommendations?
Yes, I would.
So, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to your motion to do everything you just suggested, but move it to a meeting on September 18th.
Okay, so I'm going to clarify, since we've been struggling with that this evening, that the motion on the floor is that we schedule right now, on September 18th, two public hearings for comp plan and code amendments that would include intersection-only level of service and two segments on 244th. We will have discussions on September 4th and September 11th to discuss the segments on 244th. And then on the 18th, we can decide whether or not to include those segments or not in the concurrency model. That is the motion.
I, I want a second, but I'd like to reserve the right to discuss.
Absolutely.
You like to reserve what?
I don't think you've turned your light off yet, so it's technically still on.
Sweet, I'm just going to leave it on.
Ah, we know that truth.
So, just to, to make sure, what we know we're getting ourselves into here, what this does is it, it does something I'm personally a fan of, is to kind of put a clock on this council. You know, we are now going to be up against a wall. And that wall essentially is going to be, we either adopt the intersection level of service without the amendments, or without the, the Moran changes, if I can, you know? The, the segments, for lack of a better term. I don't know if you want your name tied to that or not. Or, or we're going to move forward with those, the, the segments in intersection level of service. The only other option, well, a third option, would be that we do nothing, and we let the moratorium expire on October 4th, 3rd, October 3rd, without making any changes to our comp plan or our code regarding a new concurrency model. The other option would be that we extend the moratorium and we continue this, God forbid, iterative process, trying to find a new concurrency model. So, I think we have four options. If I'm, who knows, maybe there's another, but I think those are our four options right now in front of us. And I like the fact that we're up against a clock and we have to make some decisions. Now, I know that impacts staff and a, but maybe we're getting to the end of this, fingers crossed, right? I think that's what we're looking at here, and we're trying to kind of really nail down some, some specific issues. And if you can get what you can, the data that you're gathering, to us within the next month or so, that's going to allow us to have maybe twos and threes with, you know, folks and try to nail down our position so that when we come back on September 4th, we have a more well-informed debate that we can have based upon the information you provide us during our recess. So, thank you for your work. I really appreciate it.
Okay, I don't see any more lights, so I'll just repeat the motion. September 18th, two public hearings for intersection level of service and segments on 244th and the code amendments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By a vote of 7-0, we will have those two public hearings on September 18th. Do you need any other answers from us?
That's it for tonight, thank you.
Oh, so they're going to give us all the options, not just the staff recommendations for that? Is that where we landed on that?
I'm not sure where we landed on that.
Yes, for 244th.
For 244th.
Different in our motion, but you're cool with that, right?
We're cool with it.
What happened to, there it is. Okay.
So...
Mayor, if I may, just really quickly, I just, I just want to make sure that we as a council realize that we're, we're now going to spend two months and a week of staff time and, and sort of elapsed time so that we can look at two segments on 244th. So, I just want to throw that out there to make sure that we're all aware that as we do things like ask staff how they can save 5% or 10% off the budget, that we should probably going forward consider how we spend 5% or 10% of the budget churning on these decisions that, that maybe aren't good value. And I think Councilmember Hornish said it as well. So, I just want to throw that out there.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
Thank you. I guess it depends on what you consider good value. For me, it is a, a check on a road that definitely needs it. I would not given, since we are up against a wall and it is the end, if it were not where we are in time, I would have asked for it throughout the city. It should have been done a long time ago. That's what it should be. But, given that we are where we are in time, that is not what I asked for.
I have submitted a council report, which you can read. And I know that we're up against time here, but we seem to be doing very short council reports, and I think we did that with the thought that we were going to have written reports. So, if anyone has a report from a committee that they've attended, it might be good. We may need to extend by a few minutes since we have five left, but... Councilmember Valdroma?
For council reports? While I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors meeting with Councilmember Moran, we were informed that on July 24th, Fall City will come back with their drop-dead decision if they will be merging with District 10. And then they will proceed to put it on the ballots either on, in November or February, depending the decision on that and the timing that they can go. And additionally, just that, you know, that the Department of Ecology has been able to work with Eastside Fire and Rescue and Issaquah to secure approximately $300,000 in funding for the testing of PFOS of different locations. That's it.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nope, I'm good.
Councilmember Ritchie?
No report.
Councilmember Hornish?
No report.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
No report.
Councilmember Ross?
No report.
All right.
I move that we adjourn.
No, actually, because do we need to have that other executive session or not? No. Okay, we're good.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor?
What?
Wait a second. Hold on a second. Karen?
What?
We're talking about all the people that were, you know, stuck in this moratorium. And all the people...
Can you repeat that? I couldn't hear it.
We've been talking about all the people that have been stuck in this moratorium and that have been stuck here for months. And so, I would like to make the motion that...
Mayor, we've got a motion on the table to adjourn.
To adjourn. So, we have to vote on that first.
Okay.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, hold on. Take my vote back a second, a second. Hold on. Restate what, which motion are we going on right now?
Move to adjourn.
Hell, no. We're having too much fun.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Can I see hands on the nay? Okay, we are not adjourning.
Dang it.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
Sheesh. Well, I would like to make a motion that we move forward on Phase 1 of the Town Center, and we lift the moratorium for Phase 1 of Town Center and for short plats.
Second.
Third.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Ritchie?
Would the Councilmember Moran be willing to entertain long plats as well as a friendly amendment?
That's pretty much the whole thing.
Probably not the long plats unless they're the two that are, are stuck there waiting. I would, I would do those, but not just open them up for long plats at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Ritchie, can you take your light off? Thank you.
So, I'm understanding you're making a motion to lift the moratorium for specific things. So, normally, we would do that in writing because you're, you know, you're making a motion to pass an ordinance. So, we don't have that in front of us tonight. And so, I, you would need to be exceptionally specific.
Give me your phasing out on me. Can you get closer to the mic?
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it would be very difficult to do that verbally tonight. We can't publish it afterwards. It can't be signed afterwards, authenticated by the city clerk. So, there are quite a number of problems with lifting that without a written ordinance.
Oh, I thought you were coming with one.
I, I have the outline of one, but it needs to be filled in, and it, it does not say what you're, what I heard you say today. I mean, if you want to, if council wants to take a recess, we could work on that, and I could basically finish drafting an ordinance like that.
You talking about 15-minutes?
No, I think I would need at least a half an hour.
I move for a 30-minute recess.
We have a motion on the floor.
We already have a motion on the floor. Yeah.
Well, she should do a point of order for a, for a recess.
We have a motion on the floor. She can withdraw. I'm not sure if you withdraw your motion, if that still works with having her write an ordinance, but I suppose she can withdraw her motion.
Okay, I withdraw my motion at this time. It's a point of order.
I move for a 30-minute recess.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I still have lights on. Councilmember Valdroma?
So, I would like to have a 30-minute recess so that Councilmember Moran can confer with our legal attorney and bring back a resolution for us to look at regarding her previous motion so that she can restate that motion.
Councilmember Stewart? We still have lights on. If we can turn lights off, that will help.
So, so I just need to understand this. So, help me out here. So, last week, we were on track to approve a new concurrency model, intersection level of service only. And then, we would have finalized that today, at which time, we were planning on then lifting the moratorium. We put the emergency stop on that because we said that intersection-only level of service, albeit way better than what we currently have, wasn't good enough, that we have to add two segments for 244th. But it's good enough, the current concurrency model that's on the books today is good enough to lift the moratorium on all short plats and Phase 1 of the Town Center. Is that what I'm understanding correctly? Because that's really confusing to me.
To be clear, there are currently like four short plats that are in waiting.
Okay.
And second, it is, I checked today. And second, the Town Center, they just want to get going on, getting their first part in.
I'm not opposed to that. I was, I was all for that, provided we modified...
And I have always said from the very beginning, I trust what we have today checking with capacity versus what is written and what we've come up with on level of service intersection. So, that should not be a surprise.
May I just wait to see what comes out of the discussions with the attorney?